Good evening and welcome to the October 22 meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in our audience. I know we have representatives from leadership Rutherford. If you raise your hand. Alright, we also have a group of teachers here. Raise your hand, I know what I'm doing. Okay, we have one gentleman back over in the left corner by the doors from MTSU and he's here to watch our meeting for a class he's taking. And we're glad to have all of you with us. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand as we have Charlie Pertle, a 4th grade student at Black Fox, his sister Sarah, 2nd grade student at Black Fox, and Laura Jo Crainer, a 5th grade student from Northfield, to lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to our flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, reason, and justice.
And now I'm on the silence. Alright, members of the board, you have received a copy of the agenda. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. LaRice, to have a second. Ms. Barton, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications?
Good evening, board. I have a lot of communications for you tonight. And I actually just left the MTSU tennis courts where we have about 100 students playing with our MTSU team. So we're always thrilled to be hosted by the MTSU men's and women's tennis team. So they're having a lot of fun. We want to start out by bringing Laura Jo back to the stand here. So Laura Jo, as you just announced, is from Northfield Elementary. And she was recently, she recently received the Leading Age Tennessee Award. But that's not all. She also received the Leading Age National Volunteer Award. So this young lady is going to DC next week to, next week?
Two weeks.
San Diego. Oh, sorry. Not DC. San Diego, that's even better. So she's going, you know what, I'm just going to stop at this point and introduce Ms. Gwen Earl. Ms. Gwen is from the Leading Age Tennessee to tell you about the award.
Thank you.
Let me kind of grab that just here.
Thank you so much, and very appreciative of the opportunity to speak for a few minutes. Stones River Manor, which was the first not-for-profit home for the aged in Rutherford County, began with 29 beds and now has, is a full-service continuing care community with lots of beds. Honored that they're here with us tonight. They're a member of Leading Age Tennessee, where I serve as the executive director. We're a nonprofit association that serves anyone that touches a senior. We provide education and advocacy. So Stones River Manor did a wonderful thing last summer, and they nominated Laura Jo to receive our 2019 Leading Age Excellence in Voluntarism Award. And she obviously won it for many reasons. And not only did she win that on July 29, but she also has been selected to speak at San Diego next Tuesday at the Leading Age National Conference. And it's a big deal. It's a really big deal. And I'm so proud that she is going to be representing Leading Age. And I think everyone in this county should be so proud that she's representing Rutherford County and her school system. So congratulations. We are so proud of you. How does that make you feel?
It makes me feel really happy that there's people caring about me and recognize me that I've been up with Stones River Manor for two years. And I just do it for fun and to get to know older citizens and people. And Stones River Manor recognized that for the second year. And I was really happy because I'm going to San Diego and I have to do the speech in San Diego. And I'm just, I'm so happy because I'm doing it for fun and I'm getting, I'm getting an award for doing what I love.
Thank you, Laura Jo. Laura Jo will be doing a Q&amp;A time with the board chair of Leading Age National. So she'll be speaking handful of people, 6,000, and just talking about Rutherford County and what she does here. So there'll be an amazing video of that that we can bring back to everyone. In light of Laura Jo, I have less than two minutes left, we would love to see her school be a pilot for a campaign that Leading Age Tennessee is doing. And Laura Jo has a poster here. She chose the Activities poster, if you'll turn it around and show them, because that's her favorite profession in senior care. So Leading Age Tennessee is kicking off a campaign called Careers That Love Back. And within senior care, there are 21 different careers that we want elementary school children to see, understand, learn about, explore, has very important career paths. In 2011, the census, the census from 2011 to 2040 will triple with the older population. In the year 2035, for the first time ever, there will be more seniors than children in our nation. There is a tsunami coming of a workforce crisis in senior care like we have never seen, all over, everywhere. You probably know that, but in senior care especially. So the goal of Careers That Love Back is for children to see that choosing to serve seniors and work in senior care is a beautiful, beautiful profession. And these posters will highlight the 21 professions. And we have a set of posters on behalf of Stone Rivers Manor. We are presenting the school board with their very own set of the posters. And the hope and the goal is we're going to see those hanging all over Northfield Elementary one time when we come back to visit. And I would love to speak with you more about how we can do that all over Rutherford County, or at least Murfreesboro City Schools. I'm excited about that, and I hope you'll think about partnering with us on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this was Laura Jo's test run for speaking next week. Good job, good job. MTSU will be partnering with-
Hold on just a second, Lisa.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Chair, if I-
We're really proud of you. We represent the students all across Murfreesboro City, all 9,200 of them. And we just couldn't be prouder of what you're doing. And thank you so much, Julia, for being here tonight to represent the administration of Northfield and what you do to make sure that children understand that giving back is important. That's part of the whole child. And so we look forward to partnering certainly with you as far as healthcare. We know that's one of the big files that Rutherford County's actually looking at as far as the chamber. And we look forward to seeing how we can partner with you on that. But we're really proud of you. So you're a leader, Laura Jo. You're going to lead us through, okay? Alright, thank you.
And I should have said that Laura Jo came off the basketball court to be with us. Got to go cheer on her team. Anyway, thank you. MTSU will be partnering with Murfreesboro City Schools for books, training, and family literacy nights at Bradley, Hobgood, Mitchell-Nelson, Reeves-Rodgers, and Pittard. These will be enabled by grant partnership between MTSU, Lipscomb, Read to Succeed, and Murfreesboro City Schools. Our thanks to Dr. Katie Schrod of MTSU and Dr. Susie Gilbert of Lipscomb for involving Murfreesboro City Schools in this grant application. So big things coming as always. Mitchell-Nelson would like to thank the Congregation of Family Worship Center for their generous donation to purchase a structure to provide shade for the playground. Much-needed shade for the playground, I should say. Murfreesboro City Schools would also like to thank Sean and Jennifer Kaplan of Legacy Mutual Mortgage and the Coffee Drop Project for their donation of $23,000 to Second Harvest Food to fund the MCS Backpack Food Program for the 2019-20 school year. I know Mr. Lyles and myself went out to Second Harvest last month to accept that check. So we're very, very proud to have them as our partners. We also received a very nice note from the Tennessee Department of Education recognizing the performance of Still to Borough at the September 16 Foundations for Learning Forum. Special thanks to Tony Hartman, who leads that group, and also to the students of Scales who performed. Still to Borough also performed this past weekend at Borough International. That was Saturday. That was also a very successful event for our schools as well as the community. Scales principal Maria Johnson shared how her school and Murfreesboro City Schools is addressing adverse childhood experiences with Tennessee superintendents on the October 2 toss training. The event was concerning how to better address safety, ACEs, and trauma in the schools. Congratulations to Overall Creek Elementary. Overall has been asked by the Tennessee STEM Innovation Network to be part of the Tennessee STEM designation mentorship model and mentor other schools in the state that are interested in applying for the Tennessee STEM school designation. As you know, both Overall and Discovery School are STEM-designated schools. Also, on October 15, Overall Creek's Don Barch was invited to be a part of the Tennessee STEM Center Panel titled Making STEM Learning Meaningful and Authentic for All Students: A Teacher Event, hosted by MTSU. And while we're talking about Mr. Barch, he will also be spelling. Read to Succeed's Celebrity Spelling Bee is going to be held on Thursday, November 7. So we know he can spell steam. We're going to have to see what else he knows how to spell. But you can watch him on that Celebrity Spelling Bee, and hopefully he will do as well as some of our other celebrity speller principals. I think Ms. Newell won that spelling bee two years ago. No competition. So. Congratulations to Reeves-Rodgers teachers Lenell and Tina Bailey, who will be traveling to China the third week of November to be sharing about a summer school program they have developed in partnership with the Confucius Institute for Chinese Middle School Students and to share the ideas of teaching ESL in America, and specifically in Murfreesboro City Schools. So I know those two ladies are looking forward to their adventure, and they are also one of the key members of organizing Borough International. Gary Anderson has also been asked to present at the Georgia Association for School Facility Administrators Conference, which will occur October 27 through 30 in Savannah. His topic will be tracking energy in schools, and he'll be sharing the website he uses to track the energy for Murfreesboro City Schools. Kristy Mall of Discovery School was recently chosen as a speaker for the Vanderbilt Programs for Talented Youth and Tennessee Association for Gifted Conference on October 24 through 25. We're proud to have Kristy representing our schools. And when, as I go through this list, I'm just amazed at all the different places that Murfreesboro City Schools is being represented. Congratulations to Heather Knox, Gifted Specialist. Heather just got back from DC. That's where I got confused. San Diego, DC. So Heather, as you know, was chosen as the, to receive the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. I just want to stop just real quick and say, Heather, I know, stand up. That was a big deal. So congratulations to Heather on that. If you, she's got lots of great photos to share. And it was a superb event, right? So congratulations to that. Okay, winding down here. So Taste of Latin America and the Symphony Performance is this Saturday from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM at Patterson Park. That is sponsored by Bradley and Patterson Park. The Murfreesboro Symphony will be performing a free concert at 11:00. And I think the Bradley Choir begins speaking at 10:00 or 10:30. Either way, it's going to be a really great event all day long. Join us at Patterson Park. It's going to rain, so you can go inside and enjoy, watch the kiddos perform and talk about all of our culture in our Murfreesboro City Schools. Also Farm Saturday, which was at Black Fox, I just mentioned rain. Supposed to rain this week. So we're going to postpone Farm Saturday from this Saturday until next Saturday, November 2 at Black Fox. So everyone is invited to come out, plant a plant, try some pumpkin seeds, and all that kind of good stuff. While we're talking about farm, I'm going to talk about farm to school. It is National Farm to School Month, and you all have an apple in front of you. Tomorrow is the Southeast Crunch. Murfreesboro City Schools will be crunching into an apple at noon, and we encourage you to do so as well. We'll have nearly 10,000 apples from Pikeville, Tennessee, all being crunched somewhere around the noon hour tomorrow. So our kiddos get an extra treat at lunchtime. Sandy Shealy and her team have worked that out with all the principals. So we're really thrilled. This is our fourth year to participate in the crunch. And Sandy will be, actually have a photo shoot tomorrow with the chow bus. Our Eating Well Magazine, which is a national publication, is featuring the chow program for Murfreesboro City Schools in their magazine in the spring. One more item to report, and I'll be ready to give this back to you. The City Schools Foundation awarded 25 grants last week. We will actually do the official grant ceremony on October 30 at the home of Dr. Sidney and Liz McPhee. So certainly welcome to join us there. But we awarded 25 grants representing all 13 schools. And this is anonymous. So we never know if we're going to award to eight schools, 10 schools. But this year, it was all 13 schools. Grants range from $300 to $7,000 this year, with 16 of the grants receiving at least $2,000 in distributions. So we're really proud of what the City Schools Foundation is doing and what they can actually do in the classroom through these teacher grants. There is an entire list in your board packet of the grants that were received. But once again, the foundation works hard for us, and we appreciate their willingness to give us over $73,000 in grants. Sir, that is it.
Mr. Ballard?
Yeah, I want to blow the horn for the City Foundation because I think they work behind the scenes, and people don't realize the members from the community that are back there working and putting together plans to raise money for the teachers for these grants. And these grants are wonderful tools for the teachers to be able to advance the thinking in the classroom. So just if you know a member on the, on the board, give them thanks and tell them that they're doing a great job because every year, the money's been raised to a higher level. Is that right?
That is correct.
And so, you know, we want to punch that million-dollar mark pretty soon. So I'll put that challenge out there. But they are working hard. The race, it takes, if you've ever been involved in a race, a 5K or 10K, the preparation for that is unbelievable, just to get everything tied together. And then we're going to do the gala coming up in January. And that's more beside, behind-the-scenes operation. So stuff is, you know, people are building anthills behind you, and you don't even know it. And they're, they're really doing the good things for this city, the city and the city schools. So enough said.
And I do want to say, since you mentioned the gala, that we, the gala is January 24 this year. We will be highlighting Discovery School, and we will be honoring Collier Smith. So we are thrilled to honor Collier and all that she has done for Murfreesboro City Schools.
Thank you, ma'am. That would, you could go on all night, continue with those accolades. It is nothing but positive things, and it shows how much it involved our teachers, students, parents, everybody else that's involved with Murfreesboro City Schools. Thank you, Lisa, very much. Alright, members of the board, do I have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Alright, action items. Mr. Ringstaff or you're up, I think?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my privilege tonight to recognize 27 of our teachers to recommend that you grant them tenure. These 27 teachers have had to score at least a four or a five above expectations, or significantly above expectations, for the last two years out of their five years. This is a very huge accomplishment. It's much harder to get tenure these days than it was back in the good old days. When I, many of these 27 are here, so when I call your name, would you please stand? Some, some of them didn't show up tonight because I told them that they would have, have to give a three-minute speech. First at Black Fox, Kristy Overall. Melanie Phillips, Alina Phillips, excuse me. Sandy McDonald. Anyone yet? Okay. Alright, from Casey Lane, Nicolette Sanders. I didn't see her. Alright, Tamara Cosby, I saw her. Remain standing, please. Meredith Prater from Hobgood. I didn't see her. Olivia Calvo from Hobgood. Miranda Good from Mitchell-Nelson. Kristy Moore from Mitchell-Nelson. Alright. Jared Shelton from Northfield. I think there's a basketball game tonight. Lynn Hood from Northfield. Rachel Bjork from Northfield. Teresa Witzman from Overall Creek. Erin Lebo from Pittard. Laura Mann from Pittard. Noel Konig from Pittard. Sasha Burnett from Pittard. Stephanie West from Pittard. Tara Boaker, Boaker from Reeves-Rodgers. Amy Baltimore from Salem. I know she's here. Allison Stovall from Scales. I know she's here. Ashley Mangold from Scales. Grace Benedict from Scales. Katie Veer from Scales. Marie Barker from Scales. And Trista Gibson from Scales. Ladies and gentlemen, these are the 27 teachers who I recommend that you approve these individuals for tenure with Murfreesboro City Schools. Please give them a round of applause.
You skipped Shannon Pennington.
Who? Oops, I did.
She's not here.
Oh, okay. That's why I skipped her. Please give these individuals a round of applause. Okay, I recommend that you approve, make a motion that these individuals obtain tenure with Murfreesboro City Schools.
I am happy to make that motion because three of those are mine. So happy to make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Settle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. And here is none. I'm not even going to add it because it's there. Congratulations to each one of you. Alright, reports and information. Update on Discovery School, State STEM.
Yes, we had, we've been waiting for a night when they could come. As you know, the, the process for becoming a STEM-designated school is a pretty rigorous process. We have two schools that are going to go through it this year. We have two, I believe there are 18 elementary schools now in the state that are STEM-accredited, and we have two of them. So at this time, I'd like to turn this over to Christina Maddox to talk a little bit about that. While she's coming up, I'd also like to congratulate her. Ms. Maddox, would you like to tell the board what you did today?
So this morning, I had to defend the research that my cohort and I have done at Lipscomb for the past two and a half years to move forward in obtaining my doctorate degree in Leadership Education. So we got passed. Yay. Alright, first, I want to say thank you to Dr. Gilbert and the board for giving a few moments to recognize Discovery School, which is my happy place. As the leader, when looking at this STEM designation, I've been there for now, going on my seventh year. And this STEM designation validated the hard work and mindset of many of the educators that have existed over the past decade, some of those standing in front of you tonight. It also pushed us from going beyond just individual classrooms who incorporated these STEM practices into their teaching and learning. And it helped us create a school culture that lives and breathes STEAM integration, problem-based learning, and the engineering design. I won't ever forget when I came to Mrs. Cook over a year ago. And it was a very informal conversation, but I came to her after Overall Creek, and my, my good friend Cherry Ross talked about the STEM designation. And so I said to Ms. Cook, we need to get Discovery STEM-designated, and we need to do it in six months. She looked at me like I was crazy, and sometimes my ideas can be crazy. But as the leader of Discovery, I knew that this was a doable task because of the caliber of level of caliber, I should say, of the educators, the students, and the parents that exist at Discovery School. With a little bit of tweaking, we were able to put the, the learning into every classroom and prepare students for college and careers with community partners and the learning pathways that we have created. I'm very, very humbled to be the leader of Discovery School. It is, it's a special place with teachers that are willing, as I've seen in that six months of designation, to get out of their comfort zone, to step out of their box. And in the world of accountability that educators face, I will never be able to thank the Discovery School teachers for their dedication and commitment and willingness to go on this ship and ride this ride with me with the risks that they were taking. Enough about that. You're going to speak to the people that are my dream makers and my dream wishers that come true, and the people that did the hard work. This is my remarkable bestest, that's an inside joke, the bestest coach in the world. This is Karen Cook. We have Ms. Angela Booney, 1st grade teacher, and she is our STEAM committee chair. And then we have the remarkable Mr. Eric Matthews.
I'll just talk for a couple of minutes about my role as the academic coach moving from the classroom. We really kind of started STEAM so many years ago, starting to get those integration pieces before I left the classroom. So it was very interesting to switch gears as the academic coach there. I think that we just grow leaps and bounds every planning session, making better connections, and really bringing in those community partners and getting parents involved in lots of different ways, you know, to make learning real for the kids so that it, it's really meaningful and purposeful. So we just look for lots of different crazy connections that we can make across standards and really bring in the real world to them and do so by a lot of hard work. But those teachers at Discovery School rock it out every day. So, thank you.
Alright, hello. So I think that what I'll just talk about, again, and also very, very proud and honored to be leading as the STEAM kind of coordinator for our school. We are also leading two other schools, Segal, who's also going through that process, and Franklin County is our other one that we have. And I think the thing that I want to speak about is just the excitement. And I know, Dr. Gilbert, I was recently talking to you and Gary Anderson when we went at Overall Creek. And it's, there's just excitement for this. And a couple of things I've said is, in the beginning, it was, we've been doing it for a long time, but there was part of the way that we've kind of done this STEAM was almost out of necessity. We had some newer people on our team, and, and we kind of did this cohesively to, to work together and move forward. But now, I just can't imagine doing it any other way. And if somebody were to tell me, let's go back, and we're going to do this traditional method, I just don't think I could. So I think there's a lot of meaning that goes behind it and buy-in from our, from our faculty or all of our classroom teachers. And speaking on what Cook had mentioned about those connections, even when we had the first child come up and she was talking about the senior center, it made me immediately start thinking about PBL for like Salem Academy for 1st grade. I know that they're working on with senior houses, and they're going to be sending plants. And there's just, it's just neat to have that constant connection and have kids, one of our community partners was Mr. Anderson, get excited about double pane windows, you know, for our PBL. And it's just, it's really exciting. And I've not taught as much as some of the other people here, but I'm on my 19th year, and it's neat to be able to have that constant excitement of new things, you know, like we learned about exploding seeds today. There's one that can go 160 miles an hour, and it can go hundreds of feet. And I thought, that's so cool. And it's just, there's this constant excitement. And it comes from it being real, having real connections, real engagement with the students. So I'm just honored again to be at Discovery, and I think that we've worked very hard and very proud of us. So I'll hand over one more person.
I wanted to go last because this scares me. I can talk to kids all day long, but this is a little intimidating. So I can sit here and talk about how this has impacted myself as a teacher all night long. But I think what we all really care about is how it impacts the kids. And the, the greatest impact that I can share is one that I've shared, you know, I feel like multiple times with this group. But this year in 2nd grade, I have the first group of kids that started with- But this year in second grade, I have the first group of kids that started with full STEM integration in kindergarten. So they did it in kindergarten, they did it in first grade. And even though I've always had remarkable kids, the ones that came to me this year came to me with something different. They came to me with a different mindset, a different attitude. You know, we teach in a clientele where a lot of our kids can be their worst critics, and they want to be that perfectionist mentality all the time. So doing any kind of engineering can be hard for them because they don't get it right the first time, and that's hard. But now, since we've taken them through it so many times, failure is just part of it for them, and it actually helps them grow, and they see that, and they don't get frustrated just because they don't get the answer correct the first time. It's all about learning that real world and not about always being correct, and it's about collaboration and those 21st century skills. And I've seen those grow just over the couple of years that we've gotten to do that. So I think that's awesome, and it's great to be a part of it. So when Karen comes to me and says, "I have a crazy idea, let's do it," I'm like, "Yeah, come on. Be my thinking partner, let's do it." So yeah, come on out to Discovery, come see us.
So the last thing I want to say, my mind, like I told Dr. Gilbert, my mind is pretty frazzled after the defense this morning, so I hope I can say these words right. But being on the TSIN Leadership Institute for the state, and then receiving the National Blue Ribbon and Karen and I going to Washington DC, I came back and I told Gilbert how thankful I was and am that I work for a director of schools that allows us to be innovative despite the accountability measures that are pressured upon us every day. I also want to commend you as the board for allowing her to do that and step out of the box. I know it's very scary as leaders to have test scores linger on us and being compared to other counties and other districts. But I will say, being on the TSIN and Charlotte Young and I visiting schools across Tennessee, I said this to the principals, and I sincerely mean this to the bottom of my heart. What kills me as an educator as I'm going on these visits to STEM schools, a lot of the schools are charter schools, private schools, or schools of elite, if you want to call it that, similar to Discovery as we're called often, which I don't really care for. So I commend my colleagues that are trying to step out of their box despite the plethora of challenges they face and trying to provide STEM to students who deserve it and need it most, if I were going to argue. So thank you to the board, thank you, Dr. Gilbert, for being a leader that allows principals to take risks and teach students what it really means to be lifelong learners. Thank you. I got to tell you about the most fun. So when we went to Overall Creek, Ms. Cook and her innovation, when we were trying to think about a creative presentation, we did QR codes, and we made candy bars to try to, as Mr. Anderson mentors me, get better in marketing. We put stickers with the QR on candy bars and passed that out to the visitors. Those QR codes, if you scan them with your camera of your phone, it can be an Android or an iPhone, it will take you to videos of our students that in their own words, which is my passion, letting kids speak what we do as adults, it'll share more of the STEM at Discovery School. So we'll leave you with a candy bar, and when you have time, please visit those videos.
Ms. Maddox, would you talk about, you mentioned going to Overall. Would you talk just a little bit about the STEAM Palooza? I don't know how many districts were there or how many schools, but that's what it was about, is you all were sharing with districts that wanted to become STEM designated, right?
Yes. So Discovery School is like Overall and the TSIN, and we are serving as mentors, like Ms. Booney said, to two schools. One is Irma Segal with Emily Spencer that we're very excited about. They've already been to our campus, and it's been a great collaboration. And another is in Franklin County. So Mr. Barch and I were on a webinar and discussing the mentorships with the state, and he called me actually immediately and said, "Let's do a thing together to help others who are trying to be accredited with STEM in the state." So he created the STEAM Palooza. It's hard, hard, sorry, again, brain. But it was an event for people who are interested in becoming accredited. We had 35 to 40 visitors, and they ranged from central office staff, from principals, to teachers, to STEM coaches. It was a collaborative effort. These three were with me and did an amazing job on a teacher panel with Cherry Ross and Leah Barch and a few other teachers. And it was just an exciting time. As Barch said, and I concurred with him with the group when I spoke, the TSIN is a wonderful state network, and its initiative is one that I respect. But as Barch and I both feel, it's those of us in the trenches that are going to make STEM permeate across Tennessee by collaborating and coming together and sharing the ideas and making the work less hard and more doable for all. So it was a very exciting day. I believe it was a great success. You want to speak to it, either of you? No? Yeah, they had a lot of fun, so it was great. And we had a great time partnering with Overall Creek.
Thank you.
Very honored.
Thank you to all three of you. We appreciate the work that you've done, and congratulations on your success. All right. Report on Charting a Course for Success: America's Strategy for STEM Education.
I asked Dr. Knox to talk about her visit that she had in DC and to talk about the impact that she sees that on Murfreesboro City.
Good evening. Last week, I had the honor of attending the Excellence Awards in Science and Engineering in Washington DC. And as a part of this event, the PAMST awardees were invited to attend the White House Federal STEM Education Summit, where we met with leaders of organizations supporting STEM education across the world and members of the Office of Technology and Science Policy from the White House. During this time, the awardees had the opportunity to comment on the federal five-year STEM initiative that was released last December. We discussed what our school districts were doing that went along with the plan. We discussed what obstacles we had, and we also discussed suggestions that we had so that the school districts could get involved with the plans. The main purpose of this meeting was for us to talk about the federal plan and make sure that the funding that the federal government was given was aligned to the needs of the schools and to make sure that STEM education was appropriately supportive for all, the future of all of our students. The federal plan is entitled Charting a Course for Success: America's Strategy for STEM Education, and it was released last December 2018. We've provided you with an outline of the plan. The easiest outline is in the one entitled Progress Report on Federal STEM Implementation of the STEM Education Strategy Plan, and it's Figure 1 on Page 3. That's probably the easiest one for you to follow through. Does anybody else need a copy? And this report outlines everything that the federal government is trying to do in this five-year strategic plan. The vision of the plan is for all Americans to have a lifelong access to high-quality STEM education in the United States, to be a global leader in STEM literacy, innovation, and employment. It outlines three main goals for American STEM education. Those are building strong foundations for STEM literacy, increasing diversity, equity, and inclusion in STEM, and last, preparing the STEM workforce for the future. Many federal agencies align to provide support for this plan, including, but not limited to, the Department of Defense, the Department of Education, Department of Homeland Security, NASA, the USDA, and the National Science Foundation. And an outline of some of the federal agencies supporting the STEM education and their involvement has been provided for you in the other document. And it shows not only how, who is being involved, but how they are attacking their actions on this federal STEM plan. The Committee on STEM Education then developed four pathways in which to achieve the goals and the vision. The first is developing and enriching strategic partnerships. And this includes fostering STEM ecosystems that unite communities and blending successful practices from across learning landscapes. The second is for engaging students where disciplines converge. Here, what they're trying to do is advance innovation and entrepreneurship education and encourage transdisciplinary learning, what we call integration, which is what we're doing in our system right now. The third is building computational literacy through promoting digital literacy and cyber safety and making computational thinking an element in all parts of education and expanding digital platforms for teaching and learning. And last, operating with transparency and accountability. They're looking for best practices across all STEM genres and trying to develop a federal implementation plan to track progress and reporting rates of underrepresented populations. So as I sat with fellow teachers and representatives from these organizations, I couldn't help but be proud of the work within Murfreesboro City Schools. Our STEAM initiative aligns closely with the goals and the pathways that are outlined in the federal five-year plan. MCS is already working with community partners to develop STEM ecosystems within our communities. We're encouraging transdisciplinary learning through our deep planning and our integration processes, and we are advancing innovation through our engineering design projects that the students are doing in their classrooms and participating in such events like Invention Convention. In many aspects, it was evidence of how far along Murfreesboro City Schools is in the process to ensure that all students have access to STEM education and reap its future benefits. Yet, this event allowed me to develop professional connections from across the country in both federal agencies and other school districts, and this would help strengthen our program and build upon its success. It enlightened me about federal programs that are out there, grants, activities, and even federal partners to provide us with resources and funding to help grow our STEAM initiative and make MCS one of the school systems charting the course for STEM education. So I want to thank you, just like Ms. Maddox, in supporting our STEAM initiative. It is where we are wanting to go. It's where our nation is wanting to go, and we are, I am just beyond thrilled to be able to represent MCS in such a capacity. Last week, it was fantastic to hear from other people. It was great to hear that we were so far along in the process, too. I sat at tables where people were like, "How does K-6 work with community partners?" And I was able to answer that question. We were able to get good ideas from one another and develop a network of professionals to be able to launch ourselves into the future for STEM education.
Mr. Settles?
Thank you. This was so good. I enjoyed that, your presentation, also, Ms. Maddox, I should say, Dr. Maddox. My question has to do with obstacles that we're facing in our system. And I just took a couple of notes because you've mentioned this, and I'm really big on the partnership end of it, and either you or Ms. Maddox could answer concerning, what are obstacles that we're looking at as far as our city schools that are, that may be keeping us from fully engaging?
I don't, some of the things that I've heard across the system is just finding resources. And that's one of the things that the federal initiative plan is trying to get out there, is they're trying to provide a database, to provide resources for activities, to provide resources for partnerships, to also provide funding and anything that we could possibly need. And so this, it's actually in a beta form right now, and those people who were awardees were allowed to get on that resource. And it's not just the federal level, they're actually looking at state and local people who would be willing to partner with us. I know I spoke with other people, actually in the state of Tennessee, where there are many companies, I know Eastman Chemical was one of them that we spoke about, who are funding a lot of the education and providing STEM laboratories in some classrooms and things because they see the value of it. These are the future people who are going to be working for them, and so they are putting forth lots of efforts and putting forth a lot of money and grants and activities and working side by side with some of the teachers to be able to help develop these partnerships.
And that's, that's kind of the resources part, I guess, is where I'm probably drilling down to. We're having some my issue, which deals with access to computers. Mac or PC, I'm not prejudiced. Yay, Apple. But I'm wondering how much of partnership we can kind of explore. And I just happened to really pick up my notebook from convention last year, talking about Google and Microsoft districts. And there's, we do a lot of development here in the city of Murfreesboro. I don't have to tell anybody that. And I think I did, I tried to put a bug in our liaison's ear about maybe attaching some monies to these developers for computers when they come into our area. It's going to help the area, it's going to help the schools, it's going to help the students. But up-to-date, computers are a necessity for our children to be competitive in this world. I mean, absolutely, it's necessary. Within six months, what you had is no longer good. I mean, I thought I was doing good when I got the Apple XR, and now they've got 13 or something. I don't know, 11. So it's one of those things where I think we are constantly trying to get ahead of the curve, and I'm just wondering how far we can go. And I don't know if you made any connections like that, but I think of Walmart. Walmart has the absolute biggest computer system outside the federal government because of just their reach. So I'm just throwing some things out there, maybe I'm just soapboxing a little bit, but I commend you for your efforts, and we want to put forth everything we can to make sure that... Because I think a lot of times when people think of STEM education, they don't think about K through 6. You know, a lot of times they're thinking 7 and older, but it starts there. And you guys are to be commended for, first of all, being in the classroom. Second of all, taking this on. I think that's highly commendable, and really, I'd like to ring the bell for you about resources. So thank you.
And that was one of the things that we discussed. We had an open forum that we were able to talk about some concerns, and that was one of my concerns is everything that I saw in the federal five-year plan, there were lots of resources out there, but they were really honed in for 7 through 12. And so that was one of the things that I voiced was an obstacle is, "We can do this at K-6. We are doing this at K-6, and we need additional resources, and we need additional grant money. We need additional professional development, and we need some of these same initiatives to be allowed for K-6 students so that we can show growth in that as well."
Ms. Barden?
Yeah, you've mentioned professional development, Heather, and I think that is so important. I still hear from people across the system that they feel like they don't have enough training to plan. And they're doing the best they can, but they haven't totally bought into it yet, I think, because they're not, they're not experiencing that surround sound kind of thing that maybe y'all are. So I can't stress that enough, that I'm still hearing it, it's not changing.
Yeah, and I'd like for Ms. Striebel to come up, since she's here, since she's a principal, and they have just started really, but would you please talk a little bit about your school and where you are?
Sorry, Tiffany.
Tiffany.
Can I recognize Ms. Maddox while this lady is coming to the podium? Did you have something to say, Ms. Maddox, again?
For the board to have clarity, because you asked a great question, and Barch and I have talked a lot about this with our success, so the board understands. Barch and I have found the community partners aspect and getting our community partners at Discovery and Overall. The success line that we have seen is that we make a clear line with community partners that we are not asking for money. So community partners that we talk about when it has to do with STEAM is solely those guys coming in as the experts, producing a problem that's real life and connecting standards, and going through that process of learning and building relationships with community partners that could be possible careers in our students' futures. So the board needs to understand the difference. We're not asking our community partners for resources. That's going to be something we're going to have to brainstorm outside of our initiatives with STEAM. I definitely want you guys to know that line.
Thank you.
Would you like to talk about where you all are in the process, Tiffany, and as far as professional development and materials and...
Yes, and I'm not sure if this is appropriate, but I'd like to take it back years ago to when STEAM first came into the district, and Leah Barch and Cherry Ross had been to a training where they first learned about STEAM. And at that time, I was a teacher with Cherry Ross, and she comes back, and she always had big ideas, and she's sharing all about STEAM, and Striebel, you've got to try this. It took a while for me to kind of learn that process. That full next year at Overall Creek, we were able to implement in our classroom. But just on that teacher standpoint, I just want to reiterate, it's nice that I was able to experience that to say it is so engaging for our students. But I also want to stay, say, looking back all those years ago till now, how the process has evolved. So when we first started that process, Roseanne, I can just say to you, I was like, we would spend seven hours in planning because we didn't really know where we were going, what we were doing. We were trying to figure it all out. They have created such a fantastic process that when you go through that process now, it makes sense. It guides you, it allows you to really make plans that if you put the time in, in the front, on the front end, then you will, on the back end, be able to have nine weeks of learning planned out. I just couldn't go on without saying, I want to toot the horn, that was the best year of teaching in my classroom, was my last year in the classroom. of teaching in my classroom, was my last year in the classroom, and I contribute that to STEAM and the fund that I had, and the fund that my students had, they didn't miss school, they were well behaved, they were focused and engaged in our instructions, so I'm sorry to take time, but I did want to say that. As far as at Black Fox, we started last year at the end of the school year, we, we required of our teachers, we asked them to go through that fourth quarter, a planning session, they met with our coaches, we had some support from central office come in, and also support, because, I'll be honest, right now, it takes a little bit more than Black Fox to, to get that, get that accomplished. We were able to have some folks from central office come in and help our teachers with planning those units, and it was messy. It wasn't perfect, it wasn't messy. Looking at where different schools who've been in that process a little longer are, we are at different places, we all are at different places, but we all are making progress. So Black Fox, we, we do that, we have our first STEAM walk, and, and I'm looking at the walls, and you know what, we're, we're trying, our students are engaged, our teachers are, you know, somewhat on board, but they're still unsure. They're learning, that's, that's a great way to put it. So this summer, our teachers, you know, they put the time in. When I say to you, the teachers at Murfreesboro City, the teachers at Black Fox Elementary, they are so dedicated to, to this profession, so dedicated to our students, they are willing to give their time up, their planning time, they want to plan, they want to plan these units, they want to know and feel confident so that when they go and present to their students, they give them what's best. We started out this summer, we planned those units, when we, when we started that this year, we just finished our first STEAM walk-through, and when I walked the halls, I've got to say to you, the learning was so evident, I could see problem solving, I could see engineering, I saw just excitement, I saw teachers, not just the students, teachers going, "Well, let me sit out here and talk about," it's like, really, it's about the students, but that's okay, go ahead and talk about your project." You know, just the teachers really excited. We met, we had that STEAM group that came in, I can't even remember what we call it, but with our central office, we met to plan as a school on what our next action steps were, and I can say at Black Fox, when we go to establish our team, I've got teachers asking, "But why didn't you choose me? Can I be on the team, too?" And I'm like, "Yeah, you can be on the team." So the excitement is there. Are we still learning? Yes. Do we still need training? Yes. I think for us, resources, funding is a big thing, but a big step I want to commend our district on taking is that planning time. So if you had asked teachers, time, resources, funding for those engineering projects, and then community partners as well, has been a big issue. I think we're addressing that, I think that we've given teachers those in-service days to plan, we're giving them the resources, we're continuing to train, we're working on funding, we're reaching out to our, our school support, not our community partners, but our supporters, and they, they have been helpful in that as well. But the community partner piece is going beyond just Murfreesboro, it starts even within our school, so that's something at Black Fox we started doing. So-and-so's husband's in, in concrete, this one sister's an engineer, it's just starting with our family and branching out, and I can just say at Black Fox, the excitement's real, quarter-two planning, much smoother, it took a day rather than two, so that, that was great. We are moving forward, we are still, still becoming familiar, so still professional development is required, but I can just say, it is definitely the direction we want to move in, being part of a diverse school. Our students are learning about careers they would have never heard about otherwise, so we are thankful that we can expose them to options they have, they have beyond the typical careers they're used to hearing about. I'm not sure if I answered that, I got so excited about so many other things.
And, and I, but I, I did not talk to you about doing this, but I appreciate your, your speaking, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I will have to say that one of your students, of course, you know I live right across the street from your school, and one of your students going home the other day stopped as I was out, anyway, in the yard, and I got to ask it about this, and she proceeded to, I think she's fifth grade, and she proceeded to tell me a 15-minute documentary, almost, of what she was doing and the project they were building, and I was so impressed with all the terminology that she used and the explanation, and she's an example of what's going on in, at Black Fox or any other school, we're on the right track for some big things in the Murfreesboro City School System, I think.
Thank you, I think so, and, and I do want to reiterate the standards, we have a better understanding through this process of our standards than I think that we've ever had.
Thank you.
Chairman Goff?
Yes, I wanted, I guess Dr. Gilbert would be the one to answer this, are we, are all of our schools engaged in STEAM now?
Yes, we're all, we're all in different directions, but it's really necessary. When you look at where the state's going, when you talk with the chamber and their workforce needs, all it takes is, if, if, if you go on the STEAM walks that we had last week, the students can explain things, they can problem solve. That's why I told you all a few, few, I guess, a couple of years ago, I'm not sure what the test score is going to show, but we're doing what's right for children, and I believe that, and what, what Ms. Maddox didn't share is, I don't know how many school districts we had at the STEAM Palooza, but that's what we're continuing to see, is other school districts come to see what we're doing here, the state is sending them here, the TSI that she's talking about is the Tennessee STEAM Innovation Network, I don't know what it stands for, but, but it's, it is a big deal, and, and yes, monetary resource is important, but what we're seeing is what Ms. Strevel was saying, it really is about the community and having community resources come in and talk about what they do and give in real-world problems, so that you have a first-grade class that has General Mills come in and talk about packaging, and the students design a rubric, and they send to me apple pies, and their containers that they have, they've had to design, or you have a third-grade class that gets in touch with the Nashville Zoo, and they design the enclosures or give them proposal for the enclosures for the tigers. And so what Ms. Strevel was saying is that one of the things we're seeing is, starting with our parents and just the resources we have within the school district, if you think about all the careers, but it really is about application, so it's not, it's not what we used to think of as the, the old show-and-tell kind of science fairs, but it's the real-world problems that these students are having to design and, and come up with, so you'll, you'll hear them talking about their engineering process, and that's the process that they go through that's really similar to what we used to have as a scientific method, but what we know is, when we struggle, that's when we learn, and so I think for a long time, we thought that it was okay for, as teachers, for us to stand up and give the students the answers, and what we know is, when we think back to when we were going to school, a lot of those answers, we don't remember, but we do remember when we had to do things and when we had to apply things and learn things. So we talk about the fact that many of us who are in decision-making roles were born in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, and so we tend to think that school ought to look like what it should look like when we went through. Well, our students right now that we have are going to be, they're going to be 35 to 45, if, from our kindergarten through our sixth grade, they're going to be 35 to 45 in 2050, 2060, 2070, and so we've got to decide that that's really what we're preparing our students for, and it's going to be about creativity, and it's going to be about problem solving, and it's going to be about collaboration, it's going to be about communication, and even today, when you talk to the business community and you ask them what they need their employees to look like, it takes about two seconds to move from, "We want them to know how to do math and reading," to, "We want them to show up on time, we want them to be able to collaborate, we want them to figure out, you know, the creativity of why this water bottle sells instead of a plastic cup." So that's really what we're talking about, and I, I really think that our teachers and our principals have, have hit on what that needs to look like in pre-K through six, and as, I, I think it was Dr. Knox, that you said that what we see so much is the focus on the seven through 12. Well, tho, those students already have, they know what they can be, we're deciding that when we're in, in K through six, and so you don't magically flip a switch when you go to seventh grade and have all the foundational knowledge and have the dispositions that you need to be successful when you get into the workforce. So we're really looking at, okay, what is our workforce going to need in 2050 and 2060, and how do we get it there? So it's really about helping, helping students think, and it's about helping our teachers think, too. So it's a, it's a different kind of mindset, but, but if you get there, what we've seen is the students are certainly more excited about learning, and what we've seen is the teachers are more excited about teaching.
Good, thanks, ma'am.
All right, enrollment report?
Yes, good evening, board. The enrollment report is the one that ended on October 1st, it is the end of the second period, it is the first period that the state uses to determine growth for next year's, I mean, for the amount of money we get this year for growth, and establishes the start for next year's BEP, the Basic Education Program Funding. We have already grown 173 students from the end of last year through October 1st, I know the number's even higher than that already, which will be reflected in our next report. We have a 96% attendance rate, which is, of course, excellent, our pupil teacher ratio is 19.79, and we're at 9,128 students. I pulled up data from the last 30 years, and the district over the last 30 years has grown 164 students on average, so we're above the average growth, and in the last five years, the district has grown over 200 students, we should be approaching that again. So we are experiencing excellent growth within our district, the programs that are established, people really, really like them. Over the last 30 years, the increase in our app percentage change, or over 50% increase in that time of students, the district has grown that much since then. So that's the, that's the report. If anyone has any questions about any of that information, I'll be glad to...
Any questions on enrollment report? Mr. Ballard?
Mr. Anderson, the 173, you mentioned the BEP formula, so is that going, is going to be affected by that favorably, correct?
Yes, we, you have to, they, they give us a number, they, they estimate our number that they fund the BEP at the beginning, beginning of the year, and then as we grow during a year, they calculate that into the statewide growth, so it's not just us, and the number, we never know, the number, it just magically appears of whatever it's going to be. Fortunately, we've been able to have the growth level that we should receive some additional funding from the state into our BEP formula.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on enrollment?
I was going to ask this, now that we're like three months into the school year, and we went through all of that rezoning, how has all of the students acclimated to their new schools, and have we, has, has that gone well? Have we had many complaints from parents?
We haven't had, had any kind of concerns with the parents, once they make the initial transition, as you know, in the beginning, there always is concerns, and we find within the first week or two, the students have adjusted very well, we haven't had any come back and ask us to go back to their school, so we feel pretty good that the rezoning was successful.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Revenue report?
Yes, we're at the 25% of the fiscal year on revenues, we're $3,696,718 in the red, and that, as you know, we don't get the funding to reach, we're always in the hole until holiday sales come in and property tax are collected, and that's the normal, normal trend of every school district. Overall, revenues are, sales taxes are up $107,000 over last year at this time, which is good, that, that's, that's a good number, we, we actually like to see that keep going up, please, please shop locally, please, because we, we love to have that sales tax come in. On the expenditure side, one of the, we have spent slightly more than what we had last year at this time, part of the issue is getting started with a new school, there's always upfront costs that go into getting the school open, and so we, we feel by the end of the year, we'll, we'll be fine, it's just getting it, getting it cranked up.
I have a question.
Ms. Moore?
Yeah, I was looking at the percentages compared to last year, so a lot of those, I assume, are explained by Salem, such as the pupil transportation, so the buses up pretty significantly, I'm guessing we added buses?
Yes, we, pupil transportation was the buses.
And so that's increased because of the new school, or something else?
Well, we had the, we have, every year, the state has a mandated retirement age for our buses, and we had buses retire, plus we had to add a bus, so we had three buses in there.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trying to get back to my, where I am. All right, anything else coming before the board tonight?
I, I would just like to make one comment, if I could. And we, I thought someone might mention this tonight, but our Murfreesboro City TV, who helps us in so many ways, they were just recognized nationally with five different awards, and actually, Alan Bozeman, and Alan, I'm going to get it wrong, but he won the Brian Wilson Memorial Award for Programming Excellence, and it's, the reward is presented annually to government television programming for displaying leadership and high values. So I just think, like I said, that they do so much for us, so much more for us than be here at these board meetings, they are in schools constantly, they're putting on our programs, our parents love them, and, and they really help us maintain a great relationship with the city and to let them know what we're doing, so yay for City TV.
Yay for City TV.
Ms. Saddles?
I did want to say, we had a wonderful time at the STEM Festival, I got to go to Hobgood, I think I ran into a couple of superstars there, but I was very, 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 very impressed with what I saw, and I was mostly impressed because my grandson seemed to really enjoy those projects, and the most impressive one was not the one that they did in his grade, but the most impressive one to me was, I think it was the kindergarten class, it may have been first grade, their problem was heating their swimming pools, and that impressed me no end, and they talked about the problems that they had and how they solved the problems, and I thought, I need these kids in my house, because, you know, I need my swimming pool to be heated, or if it just runs right, I'd be happy about that, but it was very, very impressive. I was thoroughly impressed, and I, I do notice, I do want to say, to your point, that my grandson seems to enjoy school a lot more because of those activities, and it is showing, it's excellent work, excellent.
Ms. Moore?
I want to echo that, I got to go to Hobgood and to Reeves Rogers last week to their STEAM Fest, and I had the same experience, where I walked through and kids were so excited to talk about their projects. I really loved the fourth graders who had built Rube Goldberg machines, and they had to have three instances of kinetic energy and potential energy and sound energy, and I think I talked to seven groups, you know, so 15-plus kids, to a kid, they could all tell me exactly what that meant, show me what it meant, they were just so excited and got to play, and they, and they all talked about, well, this really messed up the first time we built it, they said, "But then we figured out how to fix this, and then this thing went wrong, and then we figured out how to fix it," and they just, they've just sort of consumed it all, and they're, and they were just very excited about learning, whether they realized they were learning or not, but they were, it was wonderful to see.
And I missed the egg drop, but I think, did you get to?
Yeah, and Hobgood had a helicopter.
Yeah.
It was kind of like, it was the fanciest egg drop I've ever seen.
All right, anything else coming before the board?
I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Smotherman, who's...
I was going to do that, I didn't know when you were...
Right ahead.
...with Leadership Rutherford, or just here, but we're more than happy to have you here tonight, and any other Tuesday nights you'd like to come be with us.
It's always great to be with you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Of course, Mr. Shackleton is here with us, and we certainly appreciate...
Yes, he is.
...everything that he does. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a second. All in favor? Good night.
Bye.